Selecting meetings order Thursday, July eleventh, twenty twenty four. Um, we have some other business on the account here of tonight, the town administrator, road agent, police chief, town clerk, and a bunch of friends from DOT for you tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. The regulations.
No, that ends on that right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, um, I'll make a second that motion all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we have another set of meeting minutes, Mike.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four.
Second Mike's motion.
Discussion, I'd just like to point out that those are not to be sealed.
Okay. And, uh, I'd like to send a note out to Jennifer thanking her for doing a good job on our meeting minutes. We've been very clear the last couple of months. Okay, I'm gonna open it up for a quick public comment before we start our meeting, then we'll go right into town business. Anybody have anything to public comment? Okay, that being said, we'll close it down and go into town business. First thing on the agenda tonight, we've got William Bill Lambert, New Hampshire DOT, subject pages corner.
All right. Thank you.
Want to introduce your.
I will. Um, Bill Lambert, I'm the highway safety, um, active transportation administrator for the Department of Transportation. Prior to that, I had twenty-three years as a state traffic engineer and spent a lot of time looking at pages corner over the years. Uh, with me tonight, Lila Flynn, uh, she's like a month with us, yes, tomorrow. And, uh, Mike O'Donnell, uh, he's our representative bureau of traffic, uh, where I used to work. He lives in Ware, so he goes through this intersection.
So he's familiar with it.
Very, he's very familiar with it too. So, uh, Chief Remlard reached out to me, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, or actually July fifth, I don't know why you thought I'd be looking at emails on July fifth.
You were very responsive.
But he said he messaged July fifth. Yeah, exactly. Uh, I was at work too. And, uh, he asked me, um, recognizing that pages corners on our ten-year plan, uh, if there was any short-term solutions that we could look at. I think he was talking about things like improve, uh, enhanced signing and marking, things of that nature. I can tell you, we've, we've pretty much done all of that stuff over the years. Um, so I reached out to him and said that we've kind of shifted our philosophy and always stopped New Hampshire based on some research that we've seen from other states. Uh, I can run through this presentation fairly quickly, just to let you know kind of where we stand. Um, all right. Um, talk a little bit, intersection control hierarchy, how we treat intersections in the past. Um, a couple of intersections that we recently converted from two-way stop to always stop with some success. Uh, talk about, um, what prompted us to change our philosophy was federal highway and, um, the roadway safety foundation recognized, um, two states out of ten, uh, for lifesaving projects, and what they had done was converted two-way stop to control intersections, always stop. Talk a little bit about the opportunities and challenges that we have with, with them, and then open it up to any questions. Um, so prior to January twenty twenty four, which is when we got notice of that award recognition, we followed the federal highway guidance, uh, from the MBTCD, where traffic body, it was traffic volume based, um, when we would consider always stop, where you'd have to have enough traffic in the two opposing directions to justify an always stop. There's other criteria that was, that's included in the MBTCD, uh, but we, we really use that as justification if we were forced to, when it always stopped, um, we didn't generally use that for considering always stop control. And the emphasis for the DOT has always been a minimal impact to the traveling public. So don't stop somebody that doesn't otherwise have to stop, try to minimize that. Um, and then the safety concerns were always addressed with intersection enhancements. And I think pages corners is a great example of a place where we've done a lot of these enhancements. Larger stop signs, I think at one point, um, seventy-seven approach had a forty-eight inch stop ahead and a forty-eight inch stop sign, uh, overhead intersection control beacons which exist at this corner, uh, flashing beacons on stop signs or embedded LED lights on stop signs, which we haven't done, uh, here, uh, flanking stop sign, which would mean when you come to the intersection, the far left would have a stop sign handled at the right, uh, and intersection sightline improvements. Sightline is not bad at this location, any of the approaches, I think going back, look back towards Concord, it's a little vertical geometry, but it's still not bad. And then, and a couple of places that Mike's very familiar with, we put in intersection conflict warning systems, which, uh, on a traditional four-way intersection, where you've got a through route and two intersecting routes, um, the signs in the through route could say, um, entering, traffic entering went flashing, and then be beacons tied to detection at the side roads. So we've got three locations that we're currently piloting, not really fond of the results of those locations. Uh, so the federal guidance and the MBTCD, um, the language is in there, I won't bore you with that, but that's what we've always gone with, minimum volumes, uh, so we've had this objective criteria that we've always looked at, uh, and then this is the other criteria that I talked about. So needed control left-turning conflicts, control vehicle pedestrian conflicts, uh, road, where, locations where road users are after stopping, can't see the conflicting traffic. So those are the things that we wouldn't typically consider unless we were kind of pressed as a last resort to do an always stop. So our intersection control hierarchy, um, the always stop has always been the last resort. Um, it, it usually, you're dealing with places where the speed on the uncontrolled approach is, is a, is a concern, uh, you have continued crashes despite intersection enhancements. You know, a lot of the times the crashes are high-profile, you've got right angle crashes, they're almost always gonna be serious, involve injury and, and probably sometimes fatality. Uh, and then we have that crash severity, and then there's complaints of near misses. So even if we get, um, low crash volumes, we, we come back to intersections like this a lot because people will complain about the near misses, and, um, I don't know if I have it on this, but yeah, the complaint we get is, it's only a matter of time before somebody gets hurt or worse, uh, we hear that a lot. So this quote is attributed to Albert Einstein, I don't know if it's true or not, but I, I, I've heard it, that insanity is, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting the different results. So we've been doing the same thing over and over for a lot of years, and we're just not getting, we're not getting different results. So the, the paradigm shift for us was prompted by this federal highway roadway safety foundation recognition of ten lifesaving projects, and two of the states, uh, were recognized with converting two-way stops, always stops, Delaware and North Carolina. And because I've been around for a while, I was able to reach out with my counterparts in those states and get better information about what, what prompted them to do the thing that they were getting rewarded for, and the same thing that we're seeing, they've got a lot of rural intersections in both states, um, they've tried a lot of different things to make, uh, to reduce the crashes, and they haven't had any luck. So they, they made this quantum leap to start putting always stops in, and they've, they've had significant success. Um, so Delaware, uh, started their project in twenty twenty-one with fifteen intersections, and they added five a year after that, so they're up to twenty-five intersections with the report that, that they were recognized for. Uh, on average, all types of crashes, angle rear-end, single vehicle, and others decreased. And on average, the frequency of all the severities of cra, the frequency of all severities of crashes, injury and fatal also decreased. Uh, they put them on local roads and collector roads, and they started reducing the manual crashes. Um, twelve of twenty-five of the intersections that they put them on did not meet the warrant, the volume warrants that we would normally go by the MBTCD. And you won't be able to read this slide, uh, but that column says where the, the warrants were met, and you can count the yeses versus the no's. So the, well, half of the intersections they tried at that did not meet the warrants. This is the crash reduction, which I thought caught my attention, um, because they have, uh, the total crashes, angle rear-end, single vehicle, and all of others, and then the severity, um, property damage, only injury, and fatal. You can see the reductions, what fatal crashes reduction done is a hundred percent, that's great, uh, the numbers are really low, so that's not really statistically significant. But the serious injury crashes reduced eighty-two percent in those twenty-five intersections. I can't ignore that, that's pretty hard to, to ignore. And the crash number reduction of all the disparate types is pretty significant as well, including ankle crashes reduced by sixty-six percent. North Carolina, pretty similar, um, they, they looked at fifty intersections, four-legged two-way stop control, um, they saw sixty-eight percent reduction in total crashes, seventy-seven percent reduction in fatal and injury crashes, and seventy-five percent reduction in frontal impact crashes. Um, and they put a report, we always go by benefit to cost when we look at safety funding, um, they estimate that if they contract to change out, it's twenty thousand dollars per intersection. I'd love to get twenty thousand dollars to put up two stop signs, it's not the way it works for us, but the benefit to cost ratio on that twenty thousand dollar investment is eighty-three to one. Again, that's pretty hard to ignore. Uh, a lot of times if we get a benefit to cost ratio of one, we think we're, we're making a, um, positive change, eighty-three to one is unheard of. Um, and then, uh, the quote from their report is where there's a demonstrated safety problem and a pattern of crashes at an intersection, always stop should be considered. They also had a, um, PowerPoint presentation that they used, kind of similar to what we're doing, to go out and sell this to the public. And, and two things that caught my attention in that slide deck for them is, like us, they've got a lot of different approaches to address, um, crashes at intersections. They've got the ones that a lot of people ask for, the overhead flashing beacon, and some stop ahead pave markings and things like that, where they say, they, based on their data, they just missed the mark, they don't solve it. And then they have the next hierarchy, the next step up, the, the intersection conflict warning systems that I talked about, and enhanced intersection signing, which we get a lot of requests for that. And that, um, middling and scattered safety results, but the overwhelming, uh, most effective measures are always stop and roundabouts. And roundabouts, I know there's a ten-year plan, I don't know if they decided what the alternative, uh, the preferred alternative is at the pages corner, but those are million and, well, I remember million and a half, that's a whole, I mean, like four and a half million dollars now. Always stop, again, we can turn around in, in a heartbeat. So that struck, caught my attention, and then we always talked about, um, always stop control, if you're gonna stop the major traffic, you're gonna cause some traffic backups or traffic nightmare, and they developed this matrix of where they would consider it. So major road, minor road, traffic of four thousand vehicles a day, uh, they would just do it, they wouldn't even ask questions. Seventy-five hundred and seventy-five hundred, they'd start to consider, uh, further investigation, but they'll even consider it up to fifteen thousand vehicles a day. So that's pretty significant types of intersection. And again, North Carolina's not New Hampshire, uh, but they've got some similar roads. Um, yes, and the volume thresholds, like we talked a little bit about, um, always stop control is the safest feasible intersection design, is what they've got in their research, uh, and it works with unbalanced volume. We've always been, um, concerned with taking a, a primary road and then stopping the primary road for a much lower volume, um, local road or minor road, um, but they found that that wasn't a problem. Um, and they also found, what caught my attention, that always stop control can be installed on the primary routes without violating driver expectation. Um, so the, the driver expectation's always, uh, been something that we've been concerned about, that people come up to a rural intersection on, on the major road and wouldn't expect a stop. So, um, they put these in, if you put the right, right warning signs up, and in this case, it's a flashing beacon already there, um, it's not the concern that they thought it might have been. So a couple of occasions, just to, to run through, um, to show you what we've done, the first couple were ones that we did before I was aware of that other research, and those the performance in Delaware and North Carolina. Franconia, if anybody's familiar with Franconia, um, I ninety-three is right here, Route eighteen runs parallel, and Route sixteen goes, Route one sixteen goes this way, um, through Easton on the way over to, to one twelve. Um, this intersection right in the middle of town was a through route, was Main Street going north-south. There's a bridge right here over the Gale River, so people coming from Easton will come over that crest and maybe look at the interstate and not see the intersection right in front of them, and they had a lot of crashes here. And we had the beacon up here, we had flashing lights on the stop sign, uh, the advanced stop, uh, control and all that, um, we finally said, let's just put always stop, uh, that was, I think, again, twenty twenty-one, three years, and we haven't really heard anything about that intersection since then. Um, Gilmington, one oh seven and one forty, um, one forty is east-west from Belmont to Alton going this way, and I got that wrong, one forty's from Belmont to Alton going this way, and Pittsfield to Laconia going north-south. One oh seven had the right-of-way, or one forty would stop. Uh, the biggest challenge we had with this intersection was the stop one oh seven, uh, was building a, a little bit of an earth platform here to put a stop sign, because the, that was all cleared, all the corner. And it's downhill in both directions, um, actually, one of our engineers looks just off the screen in his direction, and, um, that was put in twenty twenty, and I haven't heard much about it since then. Um, this is in Eaton, this is probably as close to, although it's a lot less volume, as close to pages corner as, as I could think of in the state. Um, this is looking north from one fifty-three, takes a hard right to go towards Conway. Um, again, it's one of those roads where the main road goes ninety degrees through the intersection, kind of like Route thirteen does here in Dunbar, and, and it's two very small local roads. So it's a little bit different than pages corner, because these are both really low volume. Uh, the problem was that people coming around here, that this did not stop in either direction, and there was that confusion when people were coming here to make, to continue on one fifty-three, is that are they yielding to these people, or if this person's going through the intersection, are, are, are they making a left to yield to this person? Uh, and then this house on the far corner right here has got a guardrail along the front, because people would hit this corner, no matter how many curb signs we put up, they hit that corner on two wheels and sometimes end up, I think one of them ended up in the kitchen, so that's as close as I could think of. We made that an always stop in twenty twenty, uh, again, haven't heard anything since then. And one fifty-three has become kind of a parallel loop to Route sixteen for people going from the, the southeast to Conway, uh, so there's, the numbers don't show there's a lot more traffic, but I, I think there's a lot of people using that to avoid congestion on Route sixteen. And the last one is one that we just did in Lemster, how many people know where Lemster is? Okay, there's a couple of you, not a lot of people know where Lemster is. Uh, but Lemster, Route ten, north-south, uh, and then, you know, Route ten's north-south, Mountain Road is a class five road, and then the second New Hampshire turn right to the west. Route ten did not stop, Keene's to the south, Newport to the north. Uh, again, plenty of crashes here, um, no matter how many, I think the stop signs are flashing, there's one on each side, left and right, town office is right there. This is one of the things I love about my job, is I found out that Lemster, um, was visited by the Reagans when they were running, I think when Ronald was running in seventy-six, U. Gallin, uh, no, not U. Gallin.
Do they have an accident on that corner?
U. Greg. No, U. Greg was there, and they, they were amused, the Reagans from California were amused that they did not have, um, running water in the town office, they had a series of hallhouses outside of them, it's a town office.
Rich Weatherby told me that.
We tell these girls how good they got it.
But, um, we went to this town meeting, there was some skepticism of, of making it an always stop, they wanted to have an intersection beacon flashing, more flashing lights, enhanced signing, um, we did this presentation, and we convinced them that we've really tried everything that we could, uh, that the logical next step was the always stop. And this is kind of, um, you can see that it's a town center, the town office is here, library, historical society, there's a family farm on this corner. So it kind of serves as a town center, you can kind of see a picture of it here, uh, and we turned that into always stop in April, and, um, we just started hearing this week how happy they are with the performance. Uh, so a little bit about pages corner, we talked a little bit about it earlier, um, I've been around for a long time, so I've been at this intersection a few times. Route thirteen is generally considered the primary route, which is why when I first started in traffic years ago, thirteen didn't stop in either direction. Um, Route seventy-seven had the big stop signs, at one point in time, uh, we put a strobe in the intersection beacon in that, that direction, um, in federal highway, before federal highway didn't allow it anymore. Um, and the stop control was added on thirteen northbound, uh, because of concerns of people that were either going through to Jewett or making a left on the, um, seventy-seven. They're both essentially making the left turn off thirteen, and you'd have to yield to anybody coming around the corner from the right. Um, and when that wasn't happening, we responded by putting the third stop sign up here, um, but we've left the thirteen westbound or southbound, um, without a stop sign. So ten-year plan, like the chief mentioned, it's in the books, it's in the progress, um, there hasn't been any work on it yet. I think at first program money is in, um, in twenty twenty-seven, that's our preliminary engineering, um, so that's still three years away with construction funding program for twenty thirty-two, so it's eight years before we'd expect to do that on, on, and that's probably, um, best-case scenario. And like I mentioned earlier, Chief Remlard contacted me for a short-term solution, uh, that might be considered before the ten-year plan project. Um, the current volumes, I'll show you in a minute, are, are within the criteria for the always stop that North Carolina created, um, the current three-way stop control is simply not working. I think you said five crashes this month?
In two months.
In two months, um, so it's simply not working. Um, so what are we gonna do, um, to prevent, like I said, the, the current three-way stop hasn't improved anything, and it missed the mark, like using North Carolina's term. Uh, so always stop control in general, uh, is expected to reduce crashes, and this is just using the highway safety manual crash modification factors based on national research, uh, is expected to reduce crashes by as much as forty-eight percent. But what we've seen in Delaware and North Carolina, the potential is a lot greater. So it's interesting to me when I looked at it, and I've been looking at this intersection for a while, is that the Route thirteen traffic's not necessarily the primary route, the, the second, the highest volume is Route thirteen to the east towards Concord, but the second highest volume is going towards Ware, so like friends. And then there's a little, it's considered with less traffic going south from Dunbar, and then Jewett Road is only a little over a thousand vehicles. So in case you haven't figured out by now, for the, the opportunities for always stop, uh, it promotes safer speeds on the major route, it requires all drivers to stop, it reduces the odds of two vehicles entering at the same time, uh, slower stop traffic provides a safer environment for pedestrians and bicyclists, uh, does not require a long-term commitment to flashing beacons or other stop sign enhancements, um, we would tend to leave, in this case, we would tend to leave them there, because they're already the intersection beacon, um, but once people get accustomed to an always stop, you probably don't need them. Uh, and they could be implemented almost immediately. Uh, and the challenges, it requires some short-term reeducation for familiar drivers, um, I'll talk a little bit about how that works in a minute. And it introduces new delay for the major street, um, so you may, and this is kind of a generic presentation, but you may need to look at the traffic operations analysis, but I don't think we would in this case. And then the cultural, and then sometimes people just don't want to see change. So implementation, um, it's a state road for the most part, and we, we can, uh, commissioner has the authority to, to put an always stop here, but we're here to get local support. Um, if we don't get local support, we usually hear about it when, when we don't. Um, so we're, um, making this presentation, and if, uh, if the board either gives a head nod or a smile and says that they're willing to give it a shot, uh, we would move forward with that. Um, and the way that we would do that, um, the always stop control, we could implement it, we, we're looking at doing a project in the near future, but in, in the short term, we can do it with our own personnel. Uh, we would typically put for two weeks to a month, uh, warning, uh, the message boards out there that said new traffic pattern for the thirteen approach, uh, tell them that a new stop sign, a new stop control. Uh, then our crews would put in the stop signs, left and right on that approach, advanced stop signs, they would be enhanced with panels that said new, uh, probably with, uh, flags that draw more attention to them. Uh, the flags are essentially, look like flag with their sheet aluminum. Uh, and, uh, we would change that flashing beacon that's currently yellow to red, and, uh, once all that stuff was lined up, uh, we would shift to the new traffic control, we'd uncover the signs and shift to the new traffic control, and the, the message would board would say, um, new traffic pattern, and, uh, and we'd leave that there for a month or so, until people got used to it. Uh, if we didn't have local support, if you, if you thought that this wasn't a good idea, um, while we do have the authority to do it, um, we don't do things without local support, because we know that, that doesn't, that usually bites us in the, in the end, so that's it. So I'm ready to do that kind of quick. Happy to take any questions if you might have.
I'd, I'd like to start out and ask you, did you read the previous report cover, cover?
Which previous report?
From the state of Hampshire on that intersection.
I probably had part in writing it, but the road safety audit?
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is, um, coming up to that intersection from the south side, I guess, on Route seventy-seven, in that report, it was suggested that we didn't go with a four-way stop. And some of their reasoning was written in that report, and one of them is which I remember, they're coming up a hill, and they didn't think the cars would be able to take off again as they were going, af- after they stopped going on that slope there. To me, it didn't seem that steep, but that was in the report that I remember previously, and I was wondering if you guys looked at any of that information.
Yeah, and I was around when we put that report together, and like I said, we've always been against an always stop unless we were, it was like a last resort, and reasons like that, that's stopping traffic that doesn't have to stop on, on any kind of grade. Um, but we're, uh, Lemster had a little bit of a grade, Gilmington had quite a bit of a grade on the opposite side of the intersection. Um, we're not finding that that's as much of an issue, um, certainly with the continued crashes, um, that's a, if that's a consequence, it's a, it's a easy, pretty easy trade-off to accept, and we'll reduce the crashes.
Yeah, or, and or change the maintenance on the intersection as well, right?
What do you mean change the maintenance?
You could come more often, or put more salt down, or whatever you need to do.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we found that people weren't, there's hills a lot steeper than that, that, that we've haven't had to do that for, so, um, that we could certainly address that if we needed to. And again, there's an intersection improvement coming through in not that long a time, but this would be more for short term.
That's a pretty big intersection. When the roundabout does come, come to fruition here, is there gonna be a buyout of some of the neighbors' properties there, or how's that gonna work to fit in that area?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen any of the plans, and again, I, I'm not the project manager for that job, but what, we normally put something in the ten-year plan as an intersection improvement. Because of the federal funding requirements, we have to go through an alternatives analysis. So I don't know if it's, if it's necessarily, um, fixed, that it's a roundabout, but roundabouts tend to require right-of-way at the intersection, um, but they require less right-of-way beyond that, because you don't need to widen to put storage lanes out, you only need to widen for the, the circular intersection.
Do they do that by eminent domain, or how do they do that?
Uh, they can do it by eminent domain, but I think we always try to negotiate with the property owners first.
Yeah.
Um, because that's quicker, eminent domain, it takes time in courts, um, but they, they always try to negotiate, make, uh, fair market value offers.
And with this infrastructure bills that are coming through from the federal government now, has it helped you guys fund a lot of these intersections?
Um, we didn't get a lot more money specifically for the safety improvements, um, and in the near term, we're, we're seeing that inflation has eaten up a lot of the increased federal, um, funding that's available. Um, but we, we do have more flexibility, so, um, we, we're short-staffed, so we're able to bring in consultants if need be. But we, we have been able to, to, a few more projects, and I, I'm not engaged in our ten-year plan process, but I believe that we've been able to extend the number of projects or the value of our ten-year plan because of the BIL.
Mike, you have some questions? I just, I feel like we cannot wait eight years, ten years, twelve years, for something to be done to reduce the accident rate. I have fatalities around the corner, and, um, I don't want to see that in my watch. And I think we can do something in the interim now, I'd say, this, this, the stats are there, let's make it happen. I'm all in favor of this.
I have a question. I don't go to that intersection except to go to the dump, maybe once a week, twice a week, I'm very fortunate for that, but every single time I'm there, it, and you, does this type of four-way, will the speed be changed? Because I feel like the approach from Ware over that dike is just like too fast for them to stop, knowing even though there's been a stop there, the confusion of each one taking their turn, I don't, does that, is that taken into consideration when you're adding the four-way stop?
So the only, the only approach that I would think would change the speed would be the Route thirteen coming from Concord, because that's gonna be the new stop. If there's a speed issue, what was that?
Already dropped over thirty.
Well, yeah, I'm not talking about speed limit, but speed.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I guess that's more of a question for the chief on the one, on the seventy-seven side of, of what.
It's already thirty over there?
It's thirty-five all around the intersection on all four roads, but the, the problem, and we try to do traffic enforcement out there, but I think I've been very open with everyone that when we sit there, people are looking at the cruiser and not paying attention to the intersection, and our presence there causes more near misses than it prevents. So we do have that, um, one of our portable speed signs that we can affix to, uh, we set it up, I think, on the actual speed sign, the thirty-five mile an hour speed sign, which is basically right across from pages, so we could put that out there. I think, quite honestly, with a four-way stop, I think you would see traffic slowing down even more, once people got used to it.
Um, so another point we're gonna make than that, but the, uh, there was one of the things that we saw at Lemster, I guess, is a point that I'd make, is Route ten did not. is Route ten did not have to stop, and, and we put the speed limit down to thirty, and I'm the speed limit guy for the state, and the statutory speed limit for, of thirty is for business district and urban residence district. Nobody would argue that either of those things existed in Webster. So the thirty miles an hour, we're kind of a hopeful thinking, wishful thinking that if we put the speed limit signs up, people will slow down. The data that we had, people were going through the intersection before the stop signs at forty-five to fifty and into thirty, because that's the way the road was built, and that certainly accommodated it, and there wasn't a lot of enforcement out there. Um, but that's one of the things that the town was concerned about, as a cause of the cr- crashes that if you came to the stop sign and looked at the approaching traffic that's in a thirty mile an hour zone, you kinda think they're gonna come in slow, but when they come in at fifty, you misjudge the, how fast they close on you. Um, so with the stop sign in there and everybody has to stop, I would think that the chief said, um, you know, slower traffic will work.
When you approach Dewitt Road, and you know, you're looking at what's coming from Concord, they're not slowing down at thirty-five, they're just zipping right through that intersection.
Especially the going through.
Yeah. Jennifer, you had a question earlier?
Um, I have a question, and I, I do have a couple comments, but my question, um, the cost-benefit ratio that you mentioned, eighty-three to one, was in one of the examples? I was curious what that, was that referring to the eighty-three percent in lessening of accidents?
Yeah.
Or like, how does, how does that compare to one, was it one improvement versus a percentage?
Yeah, so when we do a cost-benefit analysis, it's based on the projected number of reduction in crashes, and it's projected fatal, uh, injury, fatal serious injury, and then minor injuries, and each of those, and property damage only, each of those has a, a value, trying to put value on a life, but there's a, there's a value for when we do the computation. So you have that expected number of crash reductions based on that, that's gonna be your benefit, and then the cost is obviously what you spend to do the improvement. Twenty thousand dollars, and you're gonna save that.
They got eighty-three to one, that's just, that's so massive.
Right, that means it's, that many fatal serious injury and property damage crashes that they protect will be eliminated. Maybe you had a couple comments?
Um, I totally agree on the near misses, I think that happens all the time. Um, I live on Dewitt, and approaching from there, I would disagree that the sight line is oak, is not bad personally, um, especially in the winter, and he sort of like the snow builds up and you just, you can't see, you like, you're creeping way into the intersection to see coming from Clinton when the cruiser's sitting at the corner. Um, in the dentist office, you can't see, or there's a snow plow, you know, there's like a whole, many scenarios that happen regularly. Not as much in the summer, except the cruiser or somebody else sitting there, but it still is a regular thing where like, oh, and now I can't see, so I get to the stop line, I stop, and then I creep, and I creep some more until I can see, and then, oh, now there's somebody, and, and so. But it's, I know, it's the lower amount of traffic coming from that.
Yeah, and, and I'm saying compared to other intersections in the state where you've got buildings and, I mean, there's an intersection in Tuffinboro that we'll be going to in the near future, that we've, same thing we've looked at for years, and there's a house in the corner, you almost have to lift the shades and the two-corner windows to see who's coming.
Wow.
So you don't have that kind of construction.
No, not that, I know.
It's gonna be, for the most part, if everything's maintained, you've got pretty good sight distance.
So are you suggesting put another stop sign on the opposite side, so you have two, you can look?
Yeah, initially, because we wanna make sure we grab people's attention, and especially the people that are kinda turning left, their attention might be in that direction anyway.
And I think that would help some, I mean, the trouble when you come from Ware, people are overlooking the intersection.
Yeah.
You look towards Concord, you see the hills or pemberg and stuff, and you kinda look in that direction, and all of a sudden the, the stop sign right there. Yeah, I, I've been to a hundred accidents.
We could put, we could put, um, flanking on, I would say the three-state approaches, just because there's a history of the problem here, uh, and we have a crew there for the day, a couple more stop signs, it's not gonna take a lot of time.
You're talking about the one with the, the, uh, lights are in the edge?
No, not necessarily, I, I, I think, um, I would put, we'll probably put lights on the ones for thirteen, on the new approach.
Yeah.
The new stop, but the other ones, um, like the seventy-seven, we could put one on the far left on that approach, and then the northbound, uh, coming out of Dunbar to make a right, where, come, northbound thirteen, we could put a, a flanking stop sign there too.
Yeah, like me, says, who's gonna let somebody go? People are so aggressive today, uh, distracted, just yesterday, I was going to Concord, so I pull up, two or three cars from Ware, I let the guy go, you'd think my turn, if you go the next, I stop, and here's this guy almost on my door.
Wasn't that tan truck right there?
I was looking at that when I came in, I've seen that truck before. No, but I mean, you can, you know, educate people, do that, but they do it all the time?
They try.
Two go through instead of, you know, letting alternate, you know, be a little courtesy and let one car go, and.
Yeah, the thing that we told people in Le- in Webster that were kind of, um, skeptical was, um, the way it is, they, they, they weren't convinced people were gonna stop, they said people just gonna run it. Um, well, there may be people running it, but what's happened some, from some of the crashes, the latest one was, I think it was a, a UPS truck coming out of Unity in this, on, uh, no, coming out of Unity would've been this road, that just blew right to the stop, and it was one of our actually, uh, bridge ma- maintenance trucks coming this way, the guy gets struck and hurt pretty bad. Um, so that was one where somebody was coming through and just ran it, but, but the odds of somebody in Webster, where the traffic volumes are lower, they are coming this direction and this direction at the same time are pretty low. But now if you're gonna stop this direction and this direction, the odds of them both being at that intersection at the same time are even lower. Um, so you may still have people that are poor driving behavior, but this is gonna reduce that risk of that happening at the same time.
Yeah, six people coming from Concord, yeah, like I said, they're flying, and then if you're trying to go through the intersection, or wait, you know, some don't use their, their directional, you try to go, either they cut you off, and some people stop already, they think it's a four-way stop, and then they're not moving, you don't dare go because what's he gonna do?
Right.
Uh, so, you know, people that live in town like we do, you know, we're so familiar with the intersection, and we look for that, people cutting you off, uh, you know, we stop, which a lot of people don't, so.
I remember the first, uh, my first introduction to Dunbar, when I moved into town, I stopped, and I thought it was a four-way stop, I'm like, people looking at me, clocking, and that's to make the turn, the left-hand turn on the, the Dunbar, right? It was, it's very confusing, huh?
Yeah.
That's where we let them in.
So typically, we would like to see a letter from the, this select board supporting it, um, certainly take any questions you want.
Yeah, I, just Dave's concern about coming up the hill, so I think that's legitimate, but I think the number of days that's gonna, right, that intersection is probably.
It's not as bad as it used to be.
No, I mean, it's, they'll only be during that.
Well, they'll be going slow enough.
No, but it's only gonna be during that snow event, and most of the rest of the year is gonna be fine.
Yeah.
And I, I think, they say that good outweighs the bad, and, you know, maybe it will create a little bit of different maintenance to it, maybe the crew that does that will see that.
I've just been on the board a while, and it's funny, because when they came to us, there's five or six people here.
Well, that's a stain.
They were way against it, way against that. Crystal, remember, she was.
I, I think, um, I'm speaking for the P, and I'll go on the record saying this, I think this is a great idea, I think it's, um, great collaboration with the D O T, the police department, the fire department, we are there all the time, we've been to a fatal there within the last ten years, we've had a lot of serious bodily injury crashes there. If people have to be inconvenienced for an extra few minutes on their commute, so be it. And I kinda view it as if it's gonna potentially save a life, let's do it. It's a, it's a low-cost thing, it's common sense, it's gonna slow people down, and if it's a four-way stop, we'll have a better opportunity to do traffic enforcement there because people won't be confused by the three-way stop configuration that there is now.
So you can tag them for not using a directional, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can, we would definitely have an easier time doing traffic enforcement there because the distraction element of the three-way stop would be eliminated. So I, I think this is a no-brainer, and I, I fully support it for what that's, that's worth to the board and to the public.
A couple other questions. Now, Dave's point, doing the easement and all that, it's really premature, I put the guy on the spot with that. They gotta put it on paper.
No, I just been.
No, they gotta put it on paper, lay it out.
I've been hearing from others, what are they gonna do?
No, no, but the other, the other thing is, nobody knows, it's way premature for that.
Could be ten, twenty years.
They gotta put it on paper, they gotta design it, see what's gonna work, so that's a long ways off, and the funding, I mean, you had a one-point-three-million-dollar price tag for two, three, thirty-two, I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, it tells you that we can run, run a four and a half million.
Yeah, so, I mean, all that part of it, and the getting the money. The other thing is, when I was a kid, I looked here just about all my life, there were huge stop signs and huge sign coming from Ware saying stop it, why did they disappear?
Yeah, and that would've been, it was massive, that wasn't that long, they were forty-eights, they were the biggest ones we had, and, um, the, the argument that we made at the time was that our standard went from thirty to thirty-six, so we were already using bigger than normal.
Yeah.
And then the sign sheeting, the forty-eights were called engineering grades, so they're like a glass bead embedded.
Yeah.
And the sheeting, um, that faded faster than, than, than the prismatic stuff. No, it's just the prisms are brighter, uh, so we thought that they would be that much more effective.
I just remembered they.
But again, we have forty-eights up there, they weren't big enough because people were still going through the stop signs.
They were, one that said stop ahead that was huge.
Yep.
And then the stop sign themselves, it was like, now they're got a little dicky sign underneath them that you really can't even read.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the other thing is.
You're not supposed to read it when you're going driving speed, you're supposed to read it when you're stopped.
Yeah, but, yeah, but even that, I mean, what's that say?
Yeah.
The other thing is, listening to this, and, and I agree with you, I think it's a great idea, and if it's so good, why is it taking so long to get done? Why hasn't it already been done?
Yeah, well, like I said.
You know what I'm saying?
We've kinda changed our philosophy in the last six months.
Yeah.
So the data's hard to ignore.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, it's, I agree with it, it sounds easy, it's cheap to do. At one point, there was a strobe light in that flashing light, and people complained at this, and he was like.
Um, federal highway reject, the federal highway was getting complaints from people with seizure disorders.
Oh, really?
That said it was triggering seizure disorders, so they, um, more often than not, if things aren't allowed, then federal highway kind of ignores it, uh, if it's a perceived safety benefit, in that case, they would get enough complaints, they specifically said we couldn't do it anymore. There's probably a couple towns that are still using it.
Yeah.
That federal highway message hasn't got to, but, um, we took ours down. I think we even changed it to a red strobe at one point, so.
Right, it was, yeah, it was white, right, there was like a red and a white in the middle of it, it was really effective.
Yeah.
Like you said, it disappears.
You just like to have a letter of support from the selectmen.
So I think, I think that's no problem, we didn't need to put that together, we'll send that to your office, and if the police fire chief wanna add on to it or put a separate letter, I don't think it would hurt to have it in the file. Um, we can go, we can go ahead and get that started.
Coordinate with the chief.
Well, I was just gonna ma- mention that back in either sixty-two or sixty-four, there was no, I don't remember seeing a stop sign on the Ware side. You could go back and you could go through at that time, and I think it changed around, uh, sixty-nine.
Yeah, but it was always.
Cause I can remember going through and not knowing that there was a stop sign there.
I don't say this very often, but that's before my time.
Well, no, but I'm just saying, it was a different traffic pattern, and, you know, until they put a stop sign on that direction, we had to stop, because, and like I said, I'm coming from Ware one day, and I'm going through, and the stop sign's there, and I went right through it, not knowing, because you, you didn't notice that there was gonna be a stop ad.
Right.
Something, you know, so.
If the traffic doesn't read the signs, that's why we go with the, the enhanced sign and the message board and all that stuff to get their attention.
You know, stuff, car counts, right, how much the traffic's increased over.
Oh, yeah.
Period of time, I mean, you know, Hilton and Ware, Boston, all that way, those people come to Concord just to grow the Dunbar, every, you know, you build a Concord at eight o'clock in the morning, you're stopped on those bages corner at the, uh, eighty-nine.
Yeah.
You know, you gotta hit it the right time, but all that increased traffic that we didn't have years ago.
Last time, there was thirteen more cars.
Thirteen?
So I'll coordinate, I'll, I'll start working with our, uh, maintenance folks, Mike's office and our district five office to start putting the plan in place, and I'll coordinate with Chief Ramblard as far as the schedule to keep you guys up to date, and, uh, look forward to making a change here.
We have one more comment, I think, from.
Uh, yeah, I had a question actually about traffic, so when you're coming to the intersection and there's enough room for multiple vehicles to be at the line at the same time, you know, like how people are coming from here two pages, and somebody stops to go straight or turn left, and then somebody, even three cars behind them comes up to take the right, like what is it supposed to be when you have a four-way or one?
Just single, one, one lane, yeah.
It should be single, so it shouldn't be like people coming up and blocking your view and then.
Jennifer, block the whole lane so they can't block your view.
I, I did that once, people don't like that.
And, and.
So is that what we're supposed to do, is just go in the center, trying to, okay?
Yeah, sure, yeah, just one, one car, and we, we field countless complaints from residents, non-residents, everyone under the sun about that intersection. We put everything public-facing for people to educate themselves, um, and I think it's, it's important to note that people are still gonna complain, there's gonna be people that are gonna complain, oh my God, it's a four-way stop now, who cares? If it can save a life, let's do it. It, it's, I, I'm, I'm sick and tired of hearing the complaints about Paige's corner, we have an opportunity to do something, we need to do it.
Yeah.
Plain and simple.
Unrelated, the iron intersection, putting straight eighty-nine, putting lights on.
Yeah.
Is that what the endgame is?
Well, this, the equipment's up today, I saw, it's getting closer, I know there was a big delay in getting the equipment, uh, since I did a lot of the preliminary work last summer, and I don't know what this, the, the project ended, but it looks like it's getting pretty close, because I saw.
There you go, there's your light on the hill. Right, that's a better, right there.
Yeah, right.
Is that what they're gonna do, is a long-term, a roundabout there too, because rumor was they're gonna do two roundabouts, one up and one right there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, I think that, that, I don't know if there's.
I was told that the signal's an interim solution.
Oh, okay.
Interim means standing like maybe fifteen years.
I get an interim signal in Conway, it's been there thirty-five years.
You're trying to get off eighty-nine at five o'clock, it's gonna be.
Yeah, those people are gonna love it.
Same thing's gonna happen when they don't hear anybody complaining after these are done. We're gonna go to the thirty program.
Well, thank you, folks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming on.
Your, uh, your agenda.
I'm very pleased that you responded so quickly, I was, uh, much appreciated.
Sure thing. Uh, and again, this is relatively new philosophy, and, uh, I'm building a list of locations that we've been back to time and time again, uh, so when Chief Ramblard reached out on this intersection, it was already on the list, um, so to me, coming to a place where we have support, it means we can make the change out much quicker, I don't have to sell it, so it's pretty easy to do, so appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
And I'm just sending this to you, the presentation.
That's probably the only solution anyways, is a four-way stop sign.
People are, people are demanding a change to improve safety, and that's the best option.
Okay. Like to go to the next part of the agenda. I'd like to go to our policy and discuss with the road agents about building a class
Can I just start over? If you wanna talk to. Yeah, I just, Jeff, I saw the recommendations, the changes you made, Fuleen, she, she added them on, they're in blue, I believe, in this copy.
Yes, that's correct.
And the only thing I wanted to make sure is, you're the subject planner expert, there's a disparity between what's written here, some technical specifications, and what's in the planning board subdivision regulations.
Well, there's two sections, there's the regular planning board, if you're building a new road in a subdivision, then I believe there's another section that says building on class six roads.
Right. Your, your proposal should trump anything that the planning board has done. In other words, the changes that you recommend should be implemented by the planning board.
It's on this?
Yeah, but it doesn't trump the. Twenty-four foot paved road.
Okay. That's, those are for you to sign, right? Right?
Donna gave me a page that applies to, in the subdivision regulations, you have a copy of it there?
I don't know.
Single page, it says roads shall be width of at least twenty-four feet. With appropriate shoulders on each side, then it goes through section C through ten. And on ten, on the backside, is all class six roads requiring upgrades. Due to any related use change, shall be required to use the applicable construction standards. And covered in above class six roads shall have a minimum usable travel with eighteen feet including shoulders. So, what are you trying to?
The heading on this says class six. I wasn't trying to do anything to the existing regulation.
No, but there was, there was talk about.
My, my thing starts on section B, it's something like that, and C is a bad.
Oh, there's more to it?
I, I'm not sure.
Where'd you get this regulation?
It's gone.
Subdivision regulations eighteen feet.
Yeah, will we get the whole book?
No, you don't want to get the whole book. Anyway.
This, this piece of paper, it, it doesn't have everything, it's a mix of both things, it's a mix of.
Right.
If you came in and were gonna put a brand new subdivision and you were gonna construct a road, it's got some of that lingo in there, some of that specifications.
Yes.
And it's different specifications.
Right, right, but on the back page of this, she pointed out number ten for class six.
Yeah. So, in other words, Jeff, what we'd like to do is make this section number ten match your new policy.
Get rid of that.
Yes.
And take this.
And here, yes.
Yeah.
That's what we're saying.
We kept, we're saying it refers to the subdivision, but it's two different.
Right.
Regulation.
Right, okay. Number ten could say.
Half of, half of this stuff in here should be Xed out.
Right.
They, they call for a twelve inches of gravel, we don't.
Well, number ten could say class six roads and private roads refer to.
Yes. Yes.
Our policy, okay?
The reason I select.
So, have her upgrade number ten.
The two reasons I selected these width and dimensions is when we grind up our existing roads. We try to achieve that twenty-two feet of pavement or the two-foot shoulder on each side. And it seems to work and fit in the thirty-three foot rightaways fairly well, you got a shoe horn in there and you got some room for drainage and all that. And most of these class six roads that are gonna come before the town will be that old rightaway. They won't be the new sixty-foot rightaway we require on the subdivision. And then after meeting with the attorney the other day, when he said that anyone could petition the town to take it over, private and anything else. I thought it would be, this should be at least the minimum standard the town would get if they end up taking these roads over. Right?
Yep, so, to support vehicles going, safety vehicles going out.
Or just general use.
Problems, yeah.
I mean, we've got two or three different things going on, we've got the conservation commission writing their rules on what the roads could be. And everything else, I guess this is a doable, which built, the sub base and all that is built equal to our. Class five road standards for new subdivision.
Your new subdivisions of twenty-two feet with the two-foot shoulders?
Yes, wood on top of that, so total twenty-six.
Yeah.
Right, as you stip, as you.
Yeah.
Bill in the.
Total twenty-six, right.
I thought there were twenty in them, two and two for twenty-four, they're twenty-six now currently? What? Our subdivision regulations?
Twenty-four foot of pavement, four foot shoulders.
Okay, so eight and twenty-four, there you go.
Yeah. Which is a little more stringent than what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's a brand new big road with a drainage sixty-foot rightaway and all that.
I can live with the disparity there.
It, it's just, the whole point is that Donna's been trying to get the subdivision regulations updated and. For administering a formula or recommendation to, for anything, if, if it were mirroring each other.
So, if you wanna mirror it, number ten, instead of, don't strike it, put right here, here's the title.
Strike.
Class six roads improvements and.
Private roads.
Private roads.
Yeah.
Are required to go by the Town of Dunbar policy regarding construction class six and private roads. So, just number ten refer to this policy.
Exactly, I totally agree.
This is a planning board function, they would have to adopt the change, so selectmen want the, the planning board.
That's right.
Just, what, what I would recommend is just take state, language that Dave just stipulated.
Which is?
With a number ten.
Change, yeah.
And then.
Number ten refers to this, is all.
And it, it's existing in the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, don't rate any size, there are any dimensions.
Just refer to the, uh, Dave, as you said, refer to that.
Okay, all plus six and private road upgraded.
Number ten. Refer to Town of Dunbar policies regarding construction class six and private roads. Aided July eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Totally agree with you.
So, put this header right in there.
Yeah.
Okay?
Is that okay with you, Jeff?
Yeah, that's fine.
And that way, there, there's no confusion about two different policies and we'll have it all straight. And Jeff, after she does that, these, everything else you've read through and you're good with.
Well, as far as you guys having a meeting and all that stuff.
Well, we don't have to have a meeting on this as long as this is.
No, if you wanna build a class six road, you have a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, if somebody else comes in, but I meant for policy coming from you.
Yeah, the only thing I cared about was that part.
And the rest of the one.
Public care, private roads are recorded. So, that will remain a class six road if they upgrade it, it's not gonna become a class five.
Doesn't say anything about that, huh?
Cause you have to upgrade the class five specs.
Yeah.
So, if somebody comes in and wants to build a class six road.
What I'm pushing for.
They have to do this right here.
That's what I'm pushing for.
And still remain class six road.
Still remain class six road.
However.
Or we can deny building permit in the subject.
But if somebody comes in, say they wanna build more and one else or two houses. Then you're gonna say, you gotta make it a class five road.
Well, then, if they do a subdivision, that triggers a lot of mechanisms, because then it becomes a subdivision, we're not going for a planning.
But if there's no subdivision, if there's existing laws, you are correct, if they wanna come to us again and have the board accept it as a class five road.
You'd have to meet the class five standard, this is a class six standard, if you wanna build a class six road.
That's right. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
You gotta still have some.
Yeah.
We were gonna, we were gonna try and make the standards the same, John, but the class five.
And the other.
Paved or.
We're not requiring, we're not requiring of the pavement.
Alright. Can I ask one other question, just cause I, I've read one, on a class five dirt road versus. Uh, paved road, are your dimensions the same there?
It would be if I had the input, I would, that's what I would require.
Yeah. Okay, so if somebody's gonna upgrade that to a class five dirt road.
Yeah, I wasn't successful.
Yeah, why is that?
Didn't happen.
No, but also what, what the one that just.
I wasn't successful on Guinea Road either.
Yeah.
Cause you.
This end, but the other end that was.
Yeah.
What was the problem on this end or the, on this element?
Cause.
All the other powers that be didn't like it.
But now they put this more in his hands.
Yeah, we didn't have a good policy.
Oh, it was, it was, yeah, it was, uh, we were, in fact, I was working, we were trying to pin something together, we had not a good policy.
And then, one we had over here.
Everett Road.
That was a subdivision thing, it was complicated, that's the last one. This'll take care of anything.
Well, there's a, isn't there another one on Guinea Road with Lyman's property?
We just tried it.
Lyman, in his subdivision, had specifications that he's supposed to upgrade the road.
Now, one other thing. We're still adopting it, even though Jeff has developed it, so he's provided the policy for us.
It's up to you, I can change the date, but I just.
No, it has nothing to do with the date. Right now, you have our signatures on here, but this is supposed to be coming from the road agent.
Oh, I'm just.
On the last page.
Then the signature page can come off and the policy is right there.
No, but I'm trying to talk to you, the town attorney.
Yeah.
Has provided this package with this signature page.
Yes.
So, I just wanna know if the signatures are required by the selectmen or the road agent? When you talk to him.
It's up to you, I was asking the question of Donna, this is a road agent policy, town policy?
No, listen, no, listen, in the town attorney's response to us, he was very clear. That the direction on this policy should come directly from the road agent.
Yeah.
To the select board, and I wanna make sure if he's supposed to sign it or if we're supposed to.
Okay.
It looks like he's asked us to sign it.
This was the cha- the template, and I inserted the names, so.
Yes.
Which one are you looking at, or page?
The last page.
You have the last page of the policy?
This one right here?
No, that's the waiver.
This one here, for the policy page.
If they should get a permit, that's the waiver.
This policy here, what's coming out. The town attorney was very clear that our class six and private road policy should come right from the road agent, not from the selectmen.
Where are you seeing?
It's just the signature page.
It's a signature page.
The ones that say.
Select.
David Mall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. She filled this in.
I just entered the names.
I don't know, why was the road agent?
Cause you're the one developing the policy, the policy's accepted by the planning board or the select.
And the, that's right, that was Donna.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm the road agent today.
It just needs his input.
Next year, the following year, could be a different one, you know?
Yeah, so it's your input and that's.
And what his goal was my input, right, written input is what he was saying.
And that's what this, that's what this is.
And that, again, if you remember the meeting, he said that we should solicit five chief, chief, road agent and get, on all that.
On all, on all.
On all that could be, and that was not to sign anything, but get written, his thing was to get written.
And documented, the board to the selectmen.
At least that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm with you.
So, once we upgrade that paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
And we have our upgrades here, I'd like to just send it to the town attorney, make sure he's.
Okay, this is not your question, this is the planning board, okay?
I know, but they need to do it, so we're gonna have.
Okay, so we're gonna ask, the selectmen are gonna ask them to upgrade, update their subdivision regulations.
To, to. On item ten.
Item ten, right. Got it.
Only cause it reflects this now.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, so Dave, you, for, for the signature page, you wanna keep this, you wanna change this?
I'm gonna just ask the town attorney for his review only one more time.
Okay, for the signature page, okay.
But I do believe we are gonna place, I just, I thought it should say somewhere provided by the road agent, but.
Well, the thing he check off says coffee on the road.
No, 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 it's. He's talking about the, the, the authority page. Okay, I agree with you, Dave, we've got a little readout.
Yeah, just reading out, just to make sure.
Jeff, thank you for reviewing.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff, for coming in and going over that, is there anything else for us for the road agent?
I think we should make him, he should return in two, another two weeks and see us again, bring coffee and doughnuts for us or something like that.
I might not be around. He's going north after this.
Mini vacation. Okay, and that was only in jest.
Yeah.
Well, I'd love to come see you then.
Uh, no, I.
One of those stop signs is gonna be it.
Two months.
Okay.
Okay, now, we're gonna go on to the air conditioning bid for the, uh. Police department. Right here, Louis.
Um, can I just, running through the bids, can we just take out a petty cash, get twenty dollars for a fan or something?
This, uh, this system, I, when the, the addition at the P E was built, my understanding, talking with Chris Connolly, this system was put in, so it's approximately. Twenty-three, twenty-four years old and Sergeant Tyler, uh, who still maintains his HVAC licenses, he's been kinda. Keeping it going for the last four or five years, uh, right now, we have a sprinkler spraying down the coils, trying to keep it cool. Um, it's not working too well, so what I'm trying to say is, it doesn't owe us anything, we've gotten more than, um, the years, recommended years on.
You know, life expects you.
Yeah, it's, it's in pretty rough shape, so.
That's no problem, um, and looking through the bids previous without saying any numbers, cause we thought, we still have some work to do. It looks like we have a, a bid on replacing your entire heating and cooling system, because they found a hole in the heat exchanger portion of the boiler.
Uh, I think there was some, something at the fire department.
No, ours is repaired, yours is gonna.
Oh, okay.
So.
Excellent.
That being said, we have one person with a complete bid and we have two other partial bids.
Okay.
For just doing the air condition.
Yeah.
I'd like to give the other two a chance to do the whole system.
Okay.
And then we'll be reviewing apples for apples instead of apples for oranges.
Sure, sure.
And, um.
I, I understand, uh, there's a problem that carbon monoxide could be a problem with the, with existing.
Heating system, not the.
The heating system.
Right, and, uh, because of that, that's a safety concern, we can't overlook that.
Right.
And the heating system does both, heating and cooling.
Well, no.
It's, it's the same.
It's so.
Depends what you claim.
The, the same duct, yeah, the same duct systems, yeah.
Yeah.
Have a new system big enough, they could put a duck in the fly station, right?
For heat or air?
Air.
Do you have air now?
Yeah, they got a window shaker, I wonder if we could get a, get a mini split over that, just off of our condenser.
Brutal in, you know, in our office.
I will find out, are you just concerned about the one-off stuff?
Yeah, just our, yeah, just that area.
Meeting area.
Is that locked, John, or can I call you if they come to meet me to get you up in there?
Our police department, yeah, Linda's there or somebody, but, you know, maybe just one duck would be enough to do that room. Because it's brutal, I, I just went out and purchased another window one, we bought one, we've had one for a few years, but died. Someone's gonna donate one to me, and you need to come through, so I went and bought a small one, cause we had a train in the other night and you could sit in it.
But I mean, they have, this is a three-ton system, which my little house is done with three tons, but even if we need to go to a four-ton system, it's not much more. You know, to do it and have it, so they have A C there.
So, you're talking about putting a duck, we're not a duck, we're not a duck.
Just a his, yeah, office, that's easy.
Just a, just the office, not, say his office, just the meeting room.
Yeah.
You know, just in that one area, it's like twenty, I measured it the other day before I bought this, air condition's like eighteen by eighteen or something.
Is that, is that the one I go to when I do the, um, town force meeting?
Yeah.
That's that same meeting, right?
Yeah.
Isn't that upstairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
That what you mean?
Yeah. That's what I meant, but you said not upstairs, so I got.
I mean, we have two offices upstairs.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, we have a radio, U S office, and my chief's office upstairs.
When the chief want air condition?
We can get on the bill, we can get a little.
Okay.
But I mean, that main area is really what you need, I mean, it'll come up, the heat, the air will come up.
Yeah, it's like come here, cool off.
Yeah.
It might not come up, you know, cause the heat rises, the place stays stifling.
But I mean, that main meeting train is.
The critical.
It's critical.
So, I'll call these guys and get them back, I'll tell them, well, I'm out and I'm gonna look at this building here for.
Systemally, you have just one more duck in there or something.
Yeah. I'll also ask about your office, if we're gonna go to a four-ton system, I think.
Yeah.
Wouldn't take much further than that.
Yeah, just another.
It's a little money.
So, if that's okay with you, I think, you know, we're, we're definitely gonna upgrade the system.
Okay.
We just would like to have apples for apples enough, we're not punching numbers around.
Just do heating and cooling all at the same time.
Right.
Yeah, very well.
Cause, uh, we were looking at putting some ituvans, like these units in there, but.
Yeah.
If your heating system needs an upgrade as well, it makes good sense to use what we have.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I thought that the, uh, the boiler issue was.
It was, yeah, a couple years ago, and they replaced that.
Okay. Yeah.
And then when, I think J I did a cleaning or whatever on that one, you discovered the hole in yours.
Gotcha.
So.
All right.
So, now that we have that squared away and.
Sure.
I'll get them to look at this, and even if not, if they, if they think it's more work to provide, then we can do one of these units for you.
Should just switch them.
Yeah.
He's got crazy price increases. The popularity dropped the price.
And he's.
COVID.
Yeah. I mean, they were.
That's my house, I want.
Heat and cooling.
Yeah, just.
But the noise from that.
I'll go ahead and scan all the things again, and we'll go over them when I meet them. Okay.
How about the bids?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We have some engineering here for the fire department garage doors.
Yeah, so I meant, you know, initially with Jeff Truxton, he was thinking we'd save what we could there, the center post, the side post, put structural steel in. Put a. Laminated beams, and now, he wanted to meet me again there the other day, Friday, I met him, he's thinking now we needed more supports, like running some more steel to the. To the rafters, and I said, what about just wood? You know, I go, the time we get steel fabricated, work with steel, he even thought we're doing some welding in there, I'm there, can't we just do wood? And he agreed, he was like, yeah, it'd be, it'd be a lot easier, play right now, so, I said, why don't you just plan on.
Wood.
He said, well, it's gonna change the outside parcel, because that center column's coming out, which is brick, but. You could veneer, brick if you want, put vinyl siding up there, because we're losing the brick across the top anyways, because that's where we're standing two feet. The rest of the station has the brick columns up, I mean, so, we're gonna cut the bricks on the sides. Just to get the framing lumber in, so the centerpiece, yeah, will be gone, and it'll be wood, but, you know, we do have options where we wanna do that. We just wanna vinyl out, meet them, other vinyl, or put some brick veneer in, I don't know, maybe save some bricks that come out of the, the old pipe, some mason throw them back up there. But, in the long run, lumber's gonna be the way to go.
Yeah.
You know, just, you know, obviously it'd be a cost thing, but just the ease of doing it, and working with wood instead of steel, so, that was.
Which is gonna get back to you.
Right, so he gave us these set of plans now to do it with wood instead of the steel. So, it'll be simple.
The only thing I don't understand, John, is that first girder back a few feet that he shows here.
Up top?
The steel girder, yeah, because it shows the girder coming into the wood, is that first one set back?
There's a flat girder.
Yeah.
Run, you know, horizontal this way.
Yep.
That's what he's talking to tie into.
Okay.
So, the wood'll just, those two bays will just tie into that. Uh, so, you don't even talk about that plan, I looked at it quick today, because I just got it, it looks like not even doing a meeting.
So, the headers over the garage door are very tiny, because.
Just two by eights, box.
There's no load there.
Yeah, there's no load, so you just frame in base of the doors.
And the existing framing and the gable's gonna stay.
Yep.
So, that, do we put this up in the bid notes as a next step?
That makes it way easier.
Oh, yeah.
Next step, Dave?
I would say that we'll have our guy that's doing the work at the transfer station bid it.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe Larry.
Yep.
And.
I've got another guy that was interested too.
I'll watch your name, Talen, and we'll, uh.
Yep.
Give them these plans and ask for a, the only thing I'd like to do is try and pick some sort of wall covering on there.
Yeah, we were talking about that.
I mean, they make veneer stone.
Yeah.
Um.
Obviously, they can do it at the end, so it's not gonna.
Well, you're gonna be looking at plywood and doing something.
Yeah, right, the distance. Well, because he said you can even move those doors out now, gain some, if you wanna gain another six inches or eight, but I don't, you know, you're not gonna gain that much.
So, in the center column, you talk about the center column, putting the veneer on you?
Well, they're in these two sides.
Yeah.
They're equal.
Those, they should stay brick on the sides, we're just gonna cut them up.
It's not looking like that.
No?
Got two by eight on the corners and two by eights in the center, so it's all go away.
But the eights all the way to the corner?
All the way to the corner.
Okay.
So, it's got all those going away.
So, we just gonna cut the sides wide enough for any side of the door.
He framed it all the way to the outside.
Okay.
You wanna ask him again?
Would you consider making a difference only if you cut it, that's all?
Only cut it out, I, I had thought, like I said, I had blown the pillow, so I didn't want that, I thought, we just gonna cut the brick.
So, you're talking about the coverings for the plywood on the outside?
Yeah.
You could do brick, stucco, anything.
We can do stone, we can do anything, veneer stone.
Big red.
You wanna look at that one more time?
Yeah, so I thought it was only going how far we needed to go.
Right, looks like he's doing the whole thing.
And then keep the brick.
Just doing about thirty inches there on each side, it looks like. See if you look at the metal girder on the back, kind of follow it down.
Two by, six wall studs to match the listing. You're the guy who does this all day for a living, so. Looking at these plans.
Yeah, okay, well. I think he's doing the whole face over.
Because he did talk something about how we meet the, meet the sidewall, right, what you wanna do when you meet the sidewall?
Yeah.
And.
So, we'll figure you do that whole face over, so the center matches the two sides.
Agreed.
Yeah.
The only thing is, when we bid it, I've gotta come up with a wall covering, so they bid the same thing.
That's what I say, can you, can you have me a sample wall covering, then you can show them?
I think probably to keep it in looking of the rest of their stone, we look out of place, so I think we should go with some sort of brick veneer.
Brick veneer? But, uh.
So, let's get suggestions on brick veneer.
Okay.
That's why I wanted me to run by you that.
I would make sure.
Change.
A little bit.
A little bit.
That these lower sheets apply to four feet. Would treat it.
Just do it with wood?
With veneer?
Makes sense.
No, P T. Because they're close to the grade there.
What's P T, Dave?
Pressure treated.
Oh.
So, it looks like the box of top is gonna be all two by eight, right, and then the two by eights will be the, the walls coming down, and that centerpiece will be two by eights?
Because of the height of the wall, they use two by eights instead of two by fours. So, Lynn, can you send these, or actually make me a copy of these?
Yep.
And you wanna give that extra name to that person, Talen, that'll give us three?
What, you just wanna say brick veneer for the bid?
I think so, just so we have a, they make like a false brick veneer, it's not that thick.
It's thin, yeah, very thin. The match, now you brick on the other side.
The other side would do that, newer addition, not just gonna brick. I think that might be.
Well, just say color to match the existing brick that's on the building.
Okay.
And then, because now we're changing, taking that center wall completely out, for construction, there's some wiring that's gotta be moved, clicked on Talen today.
Yeah.
Because we left some wire, when they, they raised some of the wiring, towards a couple of months ago.
Oh, relax, mate.
But the center post, we, we were planning on keeping, so there is some, a couple of switches, it's a conduit that run up through there, so that's gotta come out, get out of the way.
It could move to the side or something.
So, yeah, so we can take.
It could actually just get around and up and brought back down through the wood too, put it right back where it is.
Yeah, if the electricians can just get it out of the way.
While they're doing the structure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've already contacted him, they're meeting with him next week.
She never, I didn't.
Yeah, it's in an email, she asked if you were available.
I didn't see that, I saw your email.
No, she, she emailed.
Keep scrolling down.
It was in the email you sent me?
No, no, she's already set a date, if that date works for you.
Oh, I didn't see that.
So, you haven't responded, yeah?
Nope, I didn't see it. Uh, yeah, and in the same time, this new truck we have, needs a thirty amp electrical outlet to it, because it's got a bigger amperage, uh, electrical plug-in, because it runs the air.
Is it closer to the front or back of the?
Say what?
Is it closer to the front of the truck or the back?
It's close to the front, so, seeing if they can run us a wire.
Yeah.
Because I was trying to pick up an extension, I can't buy a thirty amp extension cord, even a twenty amp extension cord, they run overhead like we do with the headlamps, just plug in. So, I figured on that there, I could run us a dedicated line, line right to the truck.
Yeah, those thirty amps, like those big camper generated ones, you know?
Right, yeah, and they're crazy, if you're trying to buy, you can't buy one over twenty-five feet long, uh, because it has a special end on it. Because it keeps the, just to keep the air, it's trying to keep the air, breaks up and it charges a bunch of stuff, so.
You're gonna get Irish again.
I'll recall that coming in.
Yeah, so, we'll need to get that done.
I'll forward the email to you again.
Okay, I have.
I probably got that good here, well, I guess.
I have an update on the transfer station, um, concrete pad. Uh, the pad underneath the hopper has been demoed and removed, that happened very quickly, it was done, and, uh. They were waiting for concrete after that, the demo went so quick that they didn't have the concrete scheduled right away, so, um, I believe they have concrete coming tomorrow morning. So, once that poured, um, we are, we are changing around, Woody is gonna be there a couple more hours of overtime this week, because he's gonna switch out a couple of those.
He also put on a message on the, on the Facebook, alerting residents, there's a little, this little construction going on, be aware of.
Work a few hours, he is going home early these days.
Yeah.
But he has to come to change out those.
Those boxes more.
So, they're ready for Saturday?
So, um, that's it, before I go into mailbox items, does anybody else have any public comment?
I got another thing for fire department.
You do, okay.
Uh, trying to sell our old truck.
Yes.
So, I've contacted two different companies that are broker for us, uh, but they don't take a commission.
Yep.
So, okay, I mean, a ten percent, so whatever we sell for.
It's pretty common, yeah.
They don't take a ten percent, um, so I think we're better off going through them, because they, you know, that's what they do, broker trucks, I think we'll get a better.
For trucks.
So, they're going to try to auction it or try to sell it ourselves, so, just wanna let you know, it'll be a cost.
Yep. And, um, are you trying to air tag that money back to your department or the general ledger?
I'd like to go back to the cap reserve.
We think we can discuss that, depends on.
You know what's to share.
It's not gonna be much.
I'm just kidding, yeah.
Hopefully, I get twenty thousand, that's what I'm, what should be.
Okay.
So.
And the, um, ambulance, the company that's providing the new one's gonna take the other one and trade.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if, I don't know what Jeff wants to do with the dump truck, the old dump truck, but, if I'm also putting on this municipal bids on the site, I put it on, they take every kind of vehicle.
Yeah.
So, you wanna throw the dump truck out. Yeah, with the fire truck, uh, you know, could do that.
You guys, you guys never did the repairs of the older dump truck, right?
No, nothing that cost anyone.
Because you said there were a couple of substantial things.
Yeah. The mystery of, well, nothing. So, I just.
Okay.
Fire truck.
All right, I'm gonna go on to mailbox items now.
I got one question.
What was it?
Public or?
Yep.
Yes, it was.
No. What's going on with the, uh?
The power people, man, they just think it's sliced bread.
Oh, you weren't at our last meeting?
No, I wasn't.
Have to watch the medicine.
Okay.
No. Um, within the month, we should be getting new rates.
I just gotta make sure I don't, I don't miss my date.
So, uh, one, one thing we did find out, Jeff, is the town will be able to buy power, um, at that reduced rate as well, even though we have the solar panels going into it.
Of all the residents.
Uh, they're checking on the school to make sure they will, uh, once we get the new rates from them, if they're low enough, we will opt in as a select board. If they're not low enough, we will wait.
Now. What's the difference between the school and the, like, municipality?
Because the school is in a buying program already, so they either have to get out of that one or develop something new. So, we're not, as a town, we're not in that.
Residents?
They will go, they will, once we elect to, to, um, go ahead with the numbers, if they're low enough, which I think, this is gonna be the lowest that'll be. Uh, once we opt into the system, there'll be a thirty day notice that goes out to the residents, they'll get their cards, opting them all in, they'll have thirty days to opt in or out, or do whatever they wanna do.
I meant the residents or solar panels, because before there was a.
They're gonna meet with each of them individually.
Yeah.
So, they might haven't made, because before they were like excluded, they couldn't do anything with it, but now.
No, they might not be beneficial to them to do it, and so they wanna meet them each individually and discuss.
Because each solar panel has its unique characteristics as far as, uh, with itself.
I, I've had a lot of people knock on my door that do solar panels, that tell me that I should do solar panels, they'll put them up for me and all this stuff.
For free.
For free. I've been a little lenient.
Really? Don't knock on my door.
Oh, yeah, there's a guy goes around in a Cadillac, I don't think it's a scam.
So, to answer your question, very shortly, we will know what they're, what they're gonna provide us for a rate with those other towns and municipalities.
Good, and we have to, you have to agree on a term too, we're gonna go try to achieve a long-term.
Not, not just that, um, this month is also the month that U N I T L and EverSource are providing their next six months rates. So, we'll know their rates and what our rate would potentially be.
Remember what happened, beginning of this year, EverSource lowered their rate below market, because they overcharged us the, the previous six months, so they subsidized by lowering the rate over. What's gonna happen, we don't know, and so, we just wanna wait out, wait for EverSource and U N I T L to provide their information, and then, uh, we can compare.
Your delivery's gonna go up.
Well, that, delivery goes up regardless of who we get.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's not, not a small amount either, it's pretty substantial, like nine and then ten or something.
It's just under six percent.
Six and twelve.
Yeah, and so it's a total of seventeen by next August.
In fact, it's, it's, it seems like a delivery costs more than the power.
It does.
It's unbelievable.
And it definitely will when they're done.
Well, think about it.
Oh, oh, God.
I've lost all these customs this year, so.
They gotta pay the money.
Right, and they pay all their retirees.
Take our P U C when you see them.
Dave?
Yep.
You said public comment before.
I did.
So, I just wanted to say that you're gonna have them use brick veneer on.
On the beds.
The openings. Make sure they use lattipoxy versus laddercrete. You know, when they spread that stuff, it looks just like the mortar, when they put it on there, the lattipoxy holds through all kinds of weather. Laddercrete, after a few years, you'll start to see the veneer coming off.
Okay.
Pyroxy you want, not epoxy.
Okay. All right, mailbox items. We got a notice out, uh, between Hookset, Dunbar, and the schedule for Tuesday, July sixteenth at nine A M. Meeting at twenty-three, Harman's Way, for the pre-ambulation of the town boundaries with Fred Mullin. Pest control for the library, we decided last meeting to include the library in our quarterly, um, arbitration against pest there. It's, uh, two sixty-five to originate and go and set it up, and then one thirty-five quarterly after that to add it. We need to sign this one?
Yeah.
Will you just, just one more?
Yeah, it looks like it. You okay with that, Mike?
Yeah, we, we already pulled on that, yeah, we're good, it's a small, and the amount was reasonable.
We had a couple of, uh.
The funds, we were gonna say, fine comes out of maintenance.
Did Mel song song over? Red milk, yeah.
When last the work.
Right.
We had a chick on making holes over there, what's today's date, seven all eleven, did I say? Okay. We have a large right to know request for the police department, and then we just received one.
Yeah, that's it.
Um, for the town, and this right to know request is coming from an out-of-state company. And in doing some research in the R S As, because it's a huge amount of work, um, requests received out of state, um, it would not put us in a violation to not respond to them. Unless, unless their request was in person, most likely, so these requests we're receiving for all of our town expenses. We're gonna check with our town attorney, but I believe we're not gonna have to fill these out unless people come and approach us. We have a huge package here, as you can see, that the police department already did. I'm gonna try not to provide these for them, only because if we provide it from the police department, then we should do the same thing from the town office. And, uh, once we get a little bit of a legal, uh, standing to this, then we will. Go ahead and keep both departments doing the same thing, and I'm hoping to save the work every year that they send these out to us for both departments, because. If stuff's available electronically, it's one thing, you click on stuff pretty quickly, but you gotta start making, you know, a hundred and twenty-three dollars worth of copies for them to pay for and provide. So, uh, we're gonna get a little review on legal counsel with that.
The initial review, we just found, Lean has researched it, working with the N H M A, he said, we're in a, we're in a, we can say no. And so, we just wanna confirm that with our legal counsel before we do anything rash, and then we'll go from there.
I think that's true, yeah, and that, I saw your email, and I, I appreciate that, this individual apparently did this to multiple municipalities and police departments.
And I see now at least three, I think here at our, at our.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the thing is, it's about, it's their money-making operation, they're trying to get in and contracts and offer stuff, and we, again, as the N H M A says, they're not New Hampshire citizens. And right to know really applies to the New Hampshire citizens.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, um, we've got several positive recognitions for the, uh, town police officer, uh, staff in our town, as well as the chief. And I read through each of these today in our email box, and it's nice to see all this positive feedback, I really like the ones from the kids. And their drawings to the chief, the lost dog. So, uh, it's nice to see him get that information back and be able to ride it to the public. Thank you, guys, thank all the staff there too.
And well, thank you.
And all the departments, I think, uh, the touch of truck, there was another thank you in there, um, from Mary Drive there, from the library, and well appreciated, and, uh. Liked everybody coming with all the new trucks and the swap trucks and everything else, so, thanked them on our behalf. Okay, I've got another, uh. The Bensin electrical that needs repairs, it looks like, Lynn?
Yep.
And call Irish on that.
I'm gonna see if I can coordinate it the same day that they're here and look at, um, John's.
Just remember that their maintenance, uh, maybe a different time.
Oh, is that right?
Remember they sent a different crew last time, so.
Okay, all right.
You might wanna just see if they wanna, want you to call.
Now, we have funds in a checking account for this, should I?
Yeah, I would.
Just for the maintenance, would they say?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Oh. What other maintenance are we supposed to be doing on that Banson now that you brought that up?
This, the roofing material, isn't it?
Yeah, at some point.
I thought it was, they wouldn't come back to us with recommendations.
Well.
The Leo gets back, we'll hold that one. Uh, we got a response back, Lean and I looked at the report for the, um, uh, fire inspection.
Sprinkler?
Sprinkler.
Testing.
Testing, and uh.
Was that the one?
Yeah. We can see that the graphs did not meet up to what they were saying was supposed to happen, and then, um. And the response to them was, when they do their testing, because the outlet sizes are different than when they actually use the pump, that there's a percentage that's allowable. Um, to get the hundred and fifty percent of the test, so the restriction in the section when they do the discharge of the pump, um, is taken into consideration. That wasn't stated anywhere on the test, so to me, it looked like it had failed, although everything said pass, so, uh, Lean did a little research on that, and we got the information back, should we be asked. We got a notice in, um, on Guile Hill Road, uh, the town above wants to put two gates on the class six portion of that road. Jeff and I happened to be in this week when Donna was in, and uh, I didn't think that class six roads, roads were subject to gates and bars while going through a town meeting. And I guess they have updated in the last few years, the RSAs that reference that, they can be gated but not locked. So, from our turnaround at the end of Guile Hill Road to the Bow line, you'll actually be able to visibly see the gate, similar to the one that's down at Kibble Pond. And uh, people can close them and people can open them when they go through, there's gonna be another one on the other end of that road.
Hmm.
So for fire apparatus and stuff, they won't be locked supposedly, we should probably keep an eye on that.
I did ask him for a copy of the vote at town meeting, cause that's, uh, has to be, um, discontinued by gates and bars through town.
Well, I was trying to tell you when Jeff and I were in, we looked up the RSA with Donna, and.
Well, you could still put the gate without locking it.
You, you can put the gate, it just can't be locked.
What, what's the purpose of a gate?
Well, I think some people now, cause there's more developments there, Mike.
Yeah.
Might be scooting out that way to beat traffic going to Bow.
Okay.
Okay, instead of coming up.
Right.
This way, uh, or any other way, that's kind of a shortcut probably now, and they're probably getting a lot more traffic going through there. Jeff had mentioned there was some traffic going through there where they were hauling material from that site on that road. So the resident probably complained to the town and they just called even Lean.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the select board.
Far, um, far down that road is class six Dunbar, Dunbar doesn't end right at the turn around? Probably about thirty or forty feet down that road.
Into the woods?
And it could go along that.
It's the town line, it's the town line.
Down the town line right there. I went up and inspected where it is, they've got stakes in there and it's, it's on the town line, I mean, it's like. If I wasn't in the town, oh, I, I think I'd move it a foot, so make sure it wasn't Bow, not, but whatever. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it might be wise that we send them a letter, that's fine, if that's what they're doing, and they got the right to do it, that's fine, but. We're not gonna bear any financial responsibility now, we're moving forward, if it gets vandalized, it's.
Well, they're putting it on their side of the town.
Well.
Part. As far as the fire department's concerned, you'd like to see it unlocked, I would imagine.
Yeah, I mean, it does give you two ways into the, I mean, we've really never, we have used it fast, because, uh, I forget what we were doing, looking for somebody or something. That's down, back in the day, all it was is a driveway for the champs, because the old, the old road was so bad, and they never maintained it past, uh.
Class six.
Yeah, it was class six, so all it was is a driveway for, for champs, that was their driveway, for years and years, and then when Chan gave the town the mind of three, the road, the road get better.
Chance for.
And, but, there is, I cut through it.
Oh, there you go.
Uh, sometimes I'm coming to Guile Hill Road to do something, I, from Bow, I cut through it. And uh, but I, like you said, I, I know a lot more people using it than ever did before, mostly those, those people that live.
You're gonna have to put a bush bump on your car now and give it a whole notch.
Yeah, on Guile Hill Road, yeah, maybe they make an electric gate, we can get a.
Now you're talking.
Bow's up, pulling a dome, just.
Should we ask them to make sure that the gates swing into Bow and not into Dunbar?
Yeah, which way we'll be going, uh, but I, I do think a lot of those new houses. It's like any old road, it has a lot of traffic, and majority of it is from Dunbar, and I believe the new houses, but there's a fair amount of people that come from Bow, just riding around and Dunbar. Yeah. It goes both ways, but it, whatever, I just. Yeah, as long as we. Moving forward, we don't gotta go call something, say, hey, something happened to the gate, can you pay for it? There's a pain, but they lock it, they gotta pee.
Well, it's gonna be unlocked.
Yeah.
That's good.
People too lazy to get out of their car and open it, so probably it'll slow down some traffic.
After somebody opens it, they'll get out of the car and shut it.
Right, right.
Probably gonna have, let's get a spring or something.
Okay, um, we have an, a bid here, an estimate from Pro Technologies, they take care of our lines that are in the, um, Old Town Hall slash library. We had, uh, two pool stations that failed, two smoke detectors, eleven heat detectors, um, all that failed through the building when they did their inspection. It seems crazy, that amount failed since their last inspection, but, um, we have an estimate here of thirty-two eleven forty-five to replace them. And they put an approximate number of hours, twenty hours, they said that they would not go, most likely not go over that hours, on a response back from Lean. Mike, do we wish to vote on this, or wait till Justin gets here, I think it's a.
I think it's a, it's a no brainer, no brainer, it's pretty straightforward.
It's a public building now, too, it doesn't have the same functional.
Yeah, we have a meeting.
And that's come, this has been taken care of right along, so.
I think we have consensus.
What's the fire chief think?
Yeah, they get enough reason to say they failed, then they should be replaced.
Some of them are the, are the old ones.
Well, some of the old ones, uh, there was a detector upstairs that they could never get to because of the ladder issue.
That is one of them, they tested it, yeah.
That's one of them, that, that old guy we had, the other guy that we were not. Company, he would never do it, and that town hall wasn't being used for years.
Yeah. Yeah.
So a lot of those detectors up there.
Yeah.
Got overlooked, uh.
Okay.
Probably shouldn't have, but they were, in the attic, but like you said, uh, when they did the work at the town hall, I thought some of those all got upgraded at the end of it. He say where they were?
I think.
There are some in the attic.
Yeah, they're all over here.
I make motion, we accept the, the bid for Pro Technologies, I would like to make it so.
I'll make, um, I'll make the motion, Mike, I'll be second, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid.
This is just an inspection.
Uh, as the number twenty-four forty-two, the amount of thirty-two eleven forty-five, Pro Technologies, dated six twenty-seven twenty-four.
They're supposed to.
My second.
Perfect.
Yeah, they're supposed to.
All those there. All right, you've got it, man, we'll get.
He did have a fire police now, too, a lot of them.
We're getting there, Chris.
Oh, no problem.
Um, it looks like they did have somebody go out and look at our solar array where we have a foot of cracking on there. And uh, they're gonna put the necessary parts together and then come back out to repair it. And uh, that takes care of the cracking and settling and the panels misaligning on that.
I recommend, uh, the, before we accept anything for next, I think it's next year we're coming up on the anniversary where we have to buy it.
Yeah.
We do a complete inspection with the soul, with the energy committee of the, of this, of the system before we accept it, buy it. Agreed, Dave?
Yep. Um, the next item we have on our mailbox is a, a letter from Chris Romalard, our police chief. We had a citizen in here at one of our previous meetings, uh, stated that they, uh, were not enforcing the twelve ton limit, um, on the roads ways, uh, this was in speaking on a railroad. And uh, the chief said they do enforce the, uh, twelve ton limit, uh, when it's in place. Jeff had given that company, um, some ability to use that road, cause he was gonna be rebuilding it this summer, and so that's what the difference was, and we have that letter on hand from the police department. Thank you, chief.
Of course, I was born for that.
Um, we have the next letter here. Um, the building department has put a, uh, a letter together regarding, uh, the Dirt Doctor and the other company that owns that business out there. Uh, they're gonna sit down with Donna and Brian and review the number of trips and their hours, and kinda do a, uh, an update to see if they need to meet with the planning board for any. Um, update on their site activities, so once that happens, I imagine we'll get an update on that. That's it for the, uh, mailbox items. We have anything further, Mike?
I have one thing I wanna bring up, I just, uh, if recall, was made, uh, concerned, I had concerns last meeting regarding Page's Corner and the number of signs out there.
Yep.
So I alerted, uh, the chief about it, he, uh, found someone, he identified, it was emails, uh, someone in the state responsible for a sign in the area. And within hours after, he made an inquiry about it, they, they arrived on site, removed all signs at Page's Corner. And it was also, I gave them, I gave the chief a follow-up email saying that it's a violation of RSA, a misdemeanor to put signs up on a state road like that without permission. And uh, right now, it's pretty clear right there, and so, um, um, it's looking awfully nice, and it's in less of a distraction. It wasn't necessarily line of sight, it's just that when you go to the corner, you got stop signs, you got lights, and you got a thousand signs at you, which one do you read and pay attention to? And so I thought it was in the interest of public safety that we do something about it, and uh, thank you, chief, for doing that, and uh, he was surprised about that. However, there's always a however, we have some follow-up, uh, one of the owners of the sign started asking, where's my sign? And uh, chief does not know what the disposition of the sign is, and we don't know if it's saved, trashed, I mean, we have a policy, if we move a sign, a political sign, they usually store behind the police department for a couple of weeks, and give an opportunity to pick it up. We don't know what the state does, the state is an independent agency, and you couldn't get in touch with anyone regarding that, so. I'd say for the public, beware, do not put signs where they don't belong, Page's Corner is now off limits per the state. And uh, you can get special permits, but with all the accidents up there, I highly recommend that we keep it sign-free. Any comments on that, chief?
Uh, the, the big thing for the public really is it's, uh, obviously state intersection, state right of way, the state DOT, um, I learned, I had no idea, they have a couple people. Um, to cover the entire state to remove signage, um, obviously, two people to cover the whole state is not very much, so. When I inquired about Page's Corner, as Select and Commencement said, they came out that same day, and I was just asking, you know, is there anything that regulates posting signs in the right of way? And basically, they said you can't do it at all, um, unless you have permission from the state.
Cause you see them in most towns on big intersections.
Yeah, you do, um, and I don't think they, they go around actively removing them unless there's an inquiry that's made, um, and I was just trying to get clarification, is, is this allowed, is it not allowed? Um, and they educated us at the police department that it's not allowed unless you get permission from the state beforehand, or it's an official state sign, everything else is a no-go, so.
The, um.
About St. Ace on one fourteen, they're an election time.
Oh, it's awful, huh?
Signs down there.
I was thinking that one fourteen intersection there, right before, when our bill starts, that's full.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, where are you gonna put your barbecue sign up this year, that's the only thing I wanna know.
That's a good question.
Are you gonna have to?
What is it, the end of Black River Road? What he asked us.
Are you gonna have to buy a little piece off Allison to get it up there?
Yeah, really.
No, I think it's.
We don't do one at Page's, we do one out here.
Do it in the town commons, fine.
Town common.
Just put one in front of my house.
Oh, I thought they were at Page's.
Black River Road, one of the.
Can you put one at the transfer station?
On the transfer station. I'm usually at the cemetery over there.
Speaking of that, when is your barbecue, you were moving it to Fall?
September twenty-second.
September twenty-second.
I saw it in.
You got tickets yet?
Two, two, uh, working on, signs and tickets should be out.
I'll take a turkey.
Okay, bring it. I went to a chicken barbecue for a fire pump and all, for Tuesday night, had a wicked heavy storm go through there, and put the fire out.
Oh.
We're supposed to eat when we get there first, so they had to reset the fire, re-cook the chickens, we never ate that after eight o'clock.
Oh, boy.
I told the chief, I go, you know, you might wanna invest in a tent. Tell me your pick, cause we do, you know, we do a lot.
Yeah.
We've gone over there at least three times, when they've had severe thunderstorms, nights we used to go there, and this happened twice.
It doesn't melt that tent?
Huh?
That heat coming up from the, doesn't melt it, huh?
Um, pop up, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, cause we do, that's what we do here, if it's a rainy day, we cover it, but yeah, I can't believe it.
I go, Jesus. All right, um, anybody else have anything else before we leave? I'm good with my stuff, make motion, no jern.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Yeah. At, uh, nine forty-six, uh, eight forty-six.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To Chris.
Thank you, Joe.
This is a sort of a negotiation, I'm just going to, all plus six.
Yeah.
Yeah.